Welcome everyone to the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for October 12th, 2020 at 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Dan Gaffney?
Here.
Dan Green?
Here.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Here.
Nancy Moon?
Here.
Marilyn Pomeroy? Anne Rose Absent, Christelle?
Here.
And Julie, you're there.
That's the motion for approval of remote participation of board members.
Don't move.
I second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the remote participation of Jan Gaffney, Daniel Green, Allison McFadden-Keesling, Nancy Moon, Marilyn Pomeroy, and Kristy Shaw.
Please call. Chris, were you, Chris, were you the one that seconded in that?
Um, no, I think it was Dan, but.
Dan went first. Who did the second?
Was it Nancy?
Nancy, Nancy.
And Nancy. Moved and seconded.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to hold up our hands, aren't we, Nicole?
It's hard, it's hard to hear you guys over the screen because like if I'm looking at someone else, I don't see your mouth move.
Oh. We'll hold up our hands.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, that's a good idea.
That is a good idea, yeah.
Let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy? I didn't hear Marilyn.
No.
Yes. Um, and Christelle?
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept them, we, that motion passes. I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Got that one?
Got it, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy? And Christelle?
Here.
Yeah.
Okay, motion is approved. Now, the call to the public.
Yay.
Hi Laura.
Hi. All right, well, this is our, um, report from the last Friends meeting on September 26th. We had a vendor sale of used books outside the loading dock. Vendors were contacted, surveyed about their interest, and we had a lot of interest, and we made a little over a thousand dollars with that.
Great, good.
And then October 22nd will be our general membership meeting, and it will be a Zoom meeting, and Julie will send out notices and links to our members. Our holiday sale has been canceled because of COVID, and the committee, our board is working on a process to begin letting people donate books. Right now, it's all in the works. And that is what I know.
Quite succinct, thank you. Any questions for Laura? Are there any other members of the public who would like to share at this time? If not, we will end the call to the public. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
By Dan and seconded by Jan to accept the consent agenda as proposed. There are five items. Does anyone wish to discuss anything individually? If not, all in favor, please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
And Christelle?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Next item is library statistics.
We don't have our statistical report pulled together. We're finding with COVID, it's a lot more cumbersome to get those details together because we're collecting all these things manually by checking what our various virtual programs or, or whatever. So, um, we're not really prepared to do statistics specifically tonight, um, but we will have a better report for you next month. But I do have my director's report.
Okay.
Okay. So in terms of general update, um, our new head of circulation, Christopher Nido, started on Monday, October 5th. He's been settling in well, uh, because he has experience in both management and with our ILS. His training is going very quickly, and it has allowed him to focus on working with his team, um, and getting to know our patrons. So that's been really nice. Next item on Friday, October 2nd. Uh, Michigan Supreme Court ruling changed the governor's powers in terms of executive orders. Since these were the basis of many of the COVID safety guidelines, there was a brief period of confusion regarding these measures. However, many of the guidelines were already incorporated into the Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration Workplace Safety Requirements. Um, in addition, the Oakland County Health Division stepped in on Saturday, issuing their own executive order requiring masks and occupancy limits in line with the governor's orders. A few days later, when the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, MDHHS, issued a statewide health order to clarify and maintain the safety measures, the Oakland County Health Division rescinded their order to prevent conflicting verbiage. Through all of this, our attorney and the Library of Michigan have been providing the needed support to interpret all of these changes. The staff and patrons have become comfortable with the measures in place, so we were able to continue on without incident. Um, on Friday, October 9th, the MDHHS issued an updated order, which the Library of Michigan is currently reviewing to see if there are any changes that affect what we have been doing. To that end, there is a proposed update to the library's reopening policy tonight to broaden the authorities that guide our safety measures. It's a little bit too specific, so we just want to broaden that out and make it a little bit clearer. Um, next item, uh, financial update. Usually at the September meeting, the library board reviews the RFP for snow plowing. We bid out the service and the board awards a contract in October that covers November 1st through October 31st of the upcoming year. During last year's approval process, the contractor that won the award offered to add a second year to the contract at the same price. So this is just a reminder that the library board approved this offer, um, so we do not need to have an RFP process for snow plowing for the upcoming season. Michigan Outdoor Service will be the contractor again this year.
Well, that worked well.
Yes, that was really smart on our part.
Yes, it was.
Made things a lot easier, given everything else going on. Um, we didn't know we were gonna need to do that, but hey, whatever, we'll take credit for it. Um, next item, at the September meeting, the library board approved an interlocal agreement between CIDL and Oakland County to allow us to be part of the CARES Act funding that will reimburse libraries, senior centers, and community centers for unbudgeted COVID expenses from March to December of 2020. The original deadline for submission was September 30th, but that deadline has been extended to November 30th. The initial approval for each organization is now up to $50,000 with additional requests for reimbursement being fulfilled after the initial round is complete. I think we're gonna be well under $50,000, so I'm not worried about getting everything that we need covered, covered. Um, in terms of collaborations, on September 19th, I met with representatives from the Clarkson Area Alliance Club to discuss reinstating their monthly vision screening for young children. For the past several years, they have done screenings in the library's youth activities room on the second Saturday of each month from 10 until noon. Since reopening, we were able to host an American Red Cross blood drive that went very well. So we felt that using some of the same techniques this larger project used would allow us to assist the Lions Club in safely doing their vision screenings as well. Um, we moved them into the community meeting room to allow for more social distancing and implemented the same safety protocols and cleaning standards that the library has been using. Their first screening was Saturday, October 10th, from 10 until noon. I've not heard the results yet in terms of how many people they had attend. Um, but I look forward to having them continue this important work, which is especially crucial as kids return to school. Um, and then last, but at least I'm reiterating a little bit of what Laura talked about. Um, after seven weeks of successful mini book sales for the public at the Clarkson Farmers Market, the Friends of the Library hosted an outdoor book sale for book dealers on Saturday, September 26th. Project went really well and helped clear out more boxes of books from the storage area that has been intended, that had been intended for the spring book sale that COVID canceled. Um, the Friends are now working on a system by which we will be able to return to accepting donations of used books. Um, and as Laura pointed out, some final details regarding a quarantine process and sorting procedures to show the safety of the volunteers must be worked out, but we anticipate being able to accept donations in the coming weeks. That's coming soon. Get a lot of people calling and asking. We're trying, we're almost there.
Yes, I have several sacks ready to go. As do we all.
I believe others on the board have mentioned having them in the trunk of the cars. Waiting, just waiting.
We were doing during COVID, when we were quarantined.
Julie, I, I have a question, uh, about the Lions Club. Are, are they gonna continue to collect used eyeglasses?
Yes, we still have a box here at the library. You can bring them in and drop them at circulation, and they have a box up at circulation. Yes, we do still.
Okay, alright, thanks. I got a bunch of them now.
Oh, good. Let's get them out of your house and into.
It's good for the public to know that also.
It is, it is. Let's get them out of your house and into good hands.
Right. Any other comments or questions? If not, let's move to regular business. Number one, reprove, review and approval of the INN Research proposal, proposal.
Okay, um, Bill, I'm gonna go ahead and go over the basics, and then you're gonna take over from there. Does that sound okay? Okay. So since 2012, um, the Clarkston Independence District Library has been a member of Melcat, the Michigan E-Library Catalog, um, which is the interlibrary loan system that spans most of the libraries in the state of Michigan. We have been accessing the system via an application that is separate from Polaris ILS, which is our integrated library system, because Melcat is using a different system. This creates a layer of complexity in our process that we've been working with since joining Melcat. Um, in 2016, Triple I Innovative Interfaces, Inc., owner of the Polaris Library Systems, released the InReach, INN-REACH product, um, to Polaris Libraries, allowing direct integration between the different systems. Feeling that the product needed to mature, we waited for a period of time before making the decision to pursue the integration. Never fun to be the test library. Um, with staffing and workflow changes happening within the library, we are looking to streamline the interlibrary loan process by implementing this testing system. InReach is in use at some of our surrounding libraries, including Orion Township, and we have, um, seen how the system changes the procedures, increasing efficiency. The software is provided by Triple I at a cost of $6,600 with no residual yearly cost, and the quote is enclosed in your packet. This is not a budgeted item, however, $10,000 was budgeted in line 818 Professional Contract Services for a strategic planning process this year. It has been put on hold due to COVID-19. Um, in the interest of improving efficiencies, the $6,600 could be moved from 818 to 933 Equipment Maintenance to execute this project in 2020, and also, um, forego taking that money out of front balance. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bowman, because this is his project to talk about.
So, like, like I said in the, uh, the thing there, we've been a member of Melcat for a long time now, and they, and, and yet, like, we, the way we've been doing things is actually has an extra step basically involved in the process. And this is a, th- this piece of software will directly connect us, so things like, uh, patron making a request, they can make it straight from Melcat, and it will show up to, almost immediately in their Polaris record. Um, they can actually track their own holds, things like that. We just, and, and there's steps that are not required by, um, our interlibrary loan department and things at circulation that we'll, you know, it'll just completely streamline a lot of the, the, the processes we're using now.
Questions for Bill?
No, just a comment. I, I'm in favor of anything that makes the, the Mel process more efficient. I rely on it heavily.
Well, you'll still be making your requests at mel.org.
Right.
But it is, like I said, once you make that request in Mel, it will show up in Polaris saying, oh, hey, by the way, they just, they just made this request, and it's coming. So instead of having to, to look in two different systems to determine, because we get that question all the time, why don't I have my Mel yet, or where is my Mel, or where is my interlibrary loan? And we have to go, oh, we need to look at another completely different system that we don't log into all the time to see whether or not it's even on its way. So this is actually just like, makes it significantly easier.
And this is a one-time expense, right?
According to my, uh, my representative, yes, I, I asked him specifically that, is there, are there residual costs? He says there are not. It's just a, it's just a piece that you're adding on, and it's part of a, it's just part of your maintenance license at that point.
Right, I'm willing to accept first, a motion to start integration.
Oh, and this process does take three months, once we start.
Okay, well, I, I'll move that we start the integration of CIDL, Polaris ILS with Melcat via the Polaris INN Reach API for a total of $6,600 to be paid from line 933 Equipment Maintenance.
Second.
I second.
Go ahead, Allison. It's hard.
So do we have that now? Okay, all right, so motion to approve the start of integration of CIDL Polaris with Melcat for a total of $6,600 to be paid from line 933 Equipment Maintenance. Any other comments or questions about this? If not, Julie, will you please call the roll?
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
And Christelle?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Now, let's pay for it. I'll accept a motion to make a budget adjustment.
Okay, well, I'll move to make a budget adjustment of $6,600 from line 818 Professional Contract Services to line 933 Equipment Maintenance.
Very good.
Second.
Or, who seconded that?
Nancy.
Nancy, okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we make a budget adjustment of $6,600 from line 818 to line 933. Any comments or questions on that? If not, Julie can call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
And Christelle?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved.
I just have one, I have one quick question. Bill, is this something that will be available for you to start in like November?
Well, okay, like I said, this process is gonna be, I, I was talking with the, the various people involved, and they said that this is like joining Melcat. So that the process takes approximately three months for us to get from the system we're using now to the system that we want to go through. So there's gonna be a period of time where we're doing everything the same way, and then there's gonna be a cutoff point where we start doing things the new way. So it's gonna take, I said, is it like three months of really hard work, or is it like two weeks of really hard work and more like two and a half months of waiting? She says it's closer to that. So I, I, I have, I have to fill out a bunch of paperwork, kinda like we were just, like, we were joining Melcat back in, when, 2012, it was a 30 or 40-page packet we had to fill out. And then they integrated it into their system, and then we start, we get the software installed, and it's, yeah, so, but like I said, it's gonna take some time, but, um, yeah, I, I'm not certain exactly when the, now, now that I have the ability to go back to them and say, yes, we want to start now, I'll have a better timeline soon. I'll probably, I'll tell you a better timeline by November, yes, but I, I don't know.
There won't be a period of time where it's not available at all, is, will there? I mean, it's.
Not that I'm aware of, no, because it basically, but it'll be whether it's in, wh- whether it's, which system it's gonna be in, whether it's in the old way or the new way, which is irrelevant to most people.
Right.
Anybody using Melcat, it's really irrelevant. It's just for us whether or not, okay, as long as everybody follows the rules and brings their stuff back in the reasonable amounts of time, the old system will fall off faster. Basically, because we have to wait until everything completes in the old system before we can completely get rid of it, and then.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks, Bill.
Is there a cha, Bill, is there a chance that because of this waiting period, we might actually be paying for this in 2021?
No, no, the software purchase will be made first.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I wanted to fore, forewarn the board, if we were gonna come back and say, wait, that money you gave us in 2020, we're gonna need to move it before I didn't think.
No, like, like I said, the software, the software part will literally be installed. I'll get it installed, like, I'll, I'll probably call them tomorrow or the next day, let's, let's start moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's look at number two, review and approval of half insurance renewal.
Okay. So each year at this time, we review the health insurance plan that covers the full-time library employees. Um, the current plan is half 1,200 gold PPO. If we review this plan, there is an increase in the premium of about 5% and the out-of-pocket maximum, um, has been increased from 5,000 slash 10,000 to 6,000 slash 12,000. Um, the agent also provided us with an alternative plan, the half PPO Gold 1,000. The premium increase on this plan would be 1%. Um, this plan has a lower deductible, which is 1,000, 2,000, and a lower out-of-pocket max of 5,000, 10,000, uh, but includes a 20% co-insurance. And so what I wanted to do tonight is talk to you a little bit about this. So basically, what happened is they provided us with, um, the renewal, which is kinda what they did last year. And then, um, she said, oh, wait, there's an alternative option. Usually she comes to us with sort of the best deal, um, and this one, she did say there was another deal. Um, so the, um, essentially what we have here is, is two plans where the premiums, you end up paying sort of the same amount for insurance, no matter what. You're either paying it on the front end or you're paying it on the back end.
Right.
Um, in this case, um, the plan that we currently have is a, um, slightly higher deductible, but it does not include co-insurance, and it has a slightly higher out-of-pocket max. The other plan, um, has a slightly lower deductible, and a slightly lower out-of-pocket max, but there's a 20% co-insurance. So usually what we do is we have the agent come in when there's new plans and explain the plans. We talk to the staff. COVID has made all of that really complicated. First of all, we didn't get the premium information until the 11th hour. Um, the alternative plan didn't come up until the 11th hour. Um, getting the staff together, um, is prohibitive because we have more than 10 people on the plan by the time we get everybody in the room. So we can't have a meeting. We could do a Zoom meeting, but we didn't have all the information in a timely fashion. So I provided the information to the full-time employees that are on the plan to get their feedback. Because there is an increase either way. One of them is a bigger increase, one of them is a smaller increase. You can pay less on the front end, but then you're gonna be paying more on the back end. So I did hear back from some of the employees, I gave, I sent out an anonymous survey, which the Employees Benefit Committee is familiar with me doing. And all of the people I heard back from preferred the plan that we have now, even though there's a slightly higher increase. So I, essentially, there's pros and cons to both plans. One of the cons, um, that I feel is that, um, by going with the less expensive plan, the library is not paying as much on the front end, and so we are foisting, um, the, the healthcare responsibilities off a little bit more onto the staff. During a pandemic, that doesn't seem like a real good choice to me. It, to put your minds at ease, though, I didn't know there was going to be an alternative plan when you all approved the budget in September, so I budgeted for the more expensive plan. We're already budgeted for that. So it would be my recommendation that we go with the plan we've had. That's the one that the staff, um, is comfortable with. They understand how it works. Um, that's the one that they've given feedback. They're willing to take, take the hit, because they also make contributions, so they're willing to take that increase, um, if we're willing to meet them with it. They do still, obviously, when it comes down to the copays and the out-of-pocket and the, and all that, they, they do still pay out pieces of all of that, so, um, it would be my recommendation that we, we stick with the plan that we have.
The increase is, is a reasonable increase. Healthcare plans tend to increase by anywhere from five to eight or nine percent every year anyways. So that's not an alarming increase. I, I'm inclined to, if the staff is comfortable, because it, it doesn't really ultimately, for most people, it'll be about the same amount of money spent. It's just a question, like you say, of whether they're putting it in upfront or when they actually use the healthcare. You know, so if that's what the employees prefer, I would, would certainly think that that's perfectly reasonable.
We did actually have a decrease last year because it was the first year that that Affordable Care Act, um, the changes kicked in for us because it was an age-rated plan.
Right.
We actually saw a decrease last year. The staff has been, well, we've all seen, um, a, a COVID discount, um, from July to the year. So the, the library and the employees are seeing that 5% COVID discount. So this, this increase, um, they're sort of losing that COVID discount, and that's not going on into 2021, at least not that half has mentioned. So I, I'm assuming that we're seeing this increase because we got a discount for a while.
It still doesn't, it's, it's not really an alarming, really large.
It's not an alarming discount. Actually, 7% is fairly standard, and this is only 5%.
Right. So I don't, I don't see that, if, if that's what the staff seems to be comfortable with, I don't think that it's worth changing the structure of it to save that, because really, the bottom line is it's not a huge amount of money difference for us anyways.
Even though we already budgeted.
More for us, but it's not, I, I, to me, that's, it's a reasonable increase. I agree.
Other comments or questions? Yep. I hate to decrease anything during COVID, so.
Right.
Exactly. I'm in favor of that, too. I will accept a motion.
I'll move that we approve the, the increase and the renewal of the existing plan.
I'll second.
Allison and Nancy are in a tie.
Okay.
They're on a roll.
My hand helps so much, because I can look, I'm like, okay, I saw, I saw someone moving, okay.
Oh, good.
In that motion, I do need authorization to sign the paperwork.
I, I will include that in my motion.
Thank you.
All right, let me restate. It's been moved and seconded to approve the half PPO plan as presented, and to authorize the library director to sign the paperwork on behalf of the library. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? If not, Julie, you can call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy? Anne Rose, oops, sorry, Nancy, Christelle?
Yes.
Sorry, I have a list in front of me.
The motion is approved. Now, for the monthly update of the library reopening policy.
Now, in my defense, we didn't really have a big, we didn't have any big changes last month. We, we did budget last month, so. Hang on, I gotta find it. There we go.
Yeah.
It's actually pretty simple updates. This is not major, major stuff, but it is, um, given all of the changes that you heard about in the, in the director's report, we need to tidy up some things. Um, so the library board approved the library reopening plan, um, at the June 8th meeting. This policy has been serving us well, however, a few minor updates are needed. The first one, and I did highlight them in yellow so they would be easy to find, on page four, the CDC guideline for fever should be 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit and/or 38 degrees Celsius. I'm not sure how that one slipped through. We've been going with that one, but what the policy said was slightly different. Um, on page six, um, executive orders are not the only guidelines the library must follow, um, so we want to change that to, or other health orders. Or ad, or other health orders, I'm sorry. On pages seven and eight, required by executive order has been replaced with based-on-safety guidance from federal, state, county, or local health orders. Um, this also accommodates additional agencies that have requirements we must follow, such as the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, um, the Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration, the Oakland County Health Division, and the Independence Township Fire March. Among others. Um, this policy was developed by the library's attorney, Anne Sering, um, and, um, it's only being updated to include these slight changes. And at the library director's meeting on Friday, she did recommend that, um, that those of us that had, had that tight little text in there, um, broaden that out a little bit to, to make it a little bit easier so that we don't have anybody, um, nitpicking about that, so. Any questions about it? Any questions about it?
No, it all makes, sounds good.
Laid out nicely. The yellow highlighting helped a lot. Thank you.
Yes.
I was afraid there would be more, there would be more changes, but I'm pleased to see there's only a few.
No, our, our attorney is Crackerjack when it comes to this stuff.
I thought she would step in.
Yeah, she attends every single library director's meeting at the state level. She's not the library law specialist for that the state has. They have their own consultant as well, but two of them work very closely together. And so the fact that our attorney is the one that works directly with the state means that when this stuff comes down the pipeline, we're already on top of it. They are currently, as I said in my director's report, reading through that MDHHS order that came out on Friday, literally in the middle of the library director's meeting. And, and Anne and Claire, who's the consultant for the state, very politely threw up their hands and said, we'll get back to you next week. On that one, but we don't anticipate that there's a lot. It's, it's long, but we don't anticipate there's a lot in there that will affect us too heavily. There were some occupancy percentages that looked like they might be a little different, like 25% versus 20% or so. But we actually have our numbers low enough that we should be in compliance, even if they start shuffling numbers around, so I think we'll be okay.
Good.
Any other questions about our?
I'm just curious, have any libraries had to close for any reason?
We have, there have been a few that have closed. The Brandon Township Library.
Really?
Had a case. Auburn Hills had a case, Southfield had a case.
Okay.
They don't have to close long-term, though. The CDC guidelines state
Okay.
that you close your building for 24 hours, bring in deep cleaning company to do deep cleaning, and then you may reopen.
Okay, that's what I wonder. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you don't have to do a two-week quarantine on everyone.
Right, okay.
The CDC has specific guidelines in terms of close contact, who needs to quarantine. So we've been pretty good in terms of this, of social distancing, mask compliance within our building, those kinds of things.
Good. Okay, very good.
So far, but it's it's likely to happen at some point. I mean, it's just, it's a worldwide pandemic. I don't know how you get, how you get through it without, but okay, so far.
All right, as long as we have our protocols in place, so that whatever happens, we know the steps to take, I feel comfortable.
Yes.
Okay. I will accept a motion to approve the updated library reopening policy as presented.
I move to approve the updated library reopening policy as presented.
I'll second.
We're quite a team. Nancy. It's been recommended that we approve the updated library reopening policy as presented. Any other comments or questions? If not, please call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Alison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate everyone for being able to Zoom so effectively and being safe. I will now accept a motion for adjournment.
Oh, move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn for the last time tonight, Julie, please call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Alison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy. And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
At 7:05. Night work, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Everybody.